... get started here, welcome to the January fifteenth Select Board meeting. Sorry, we're being recorded and sent out live for anybody likes to watch. John Martin, Francine Tishman, Jim Labrie, Maureen Groban, and Matt Rollins upstairs at our Capitol Committee meeting because he's a colleague of ours who's been there. There's a lot of important issues going on. He was attending to town business. So if we can stand this regulation. Ledge of Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice.
Okay, just an important note about Patriots won again this past weekend and two more wins we hope this season. For those of you who aren't Patriots fans, I'm sorry.
How are you not?
I want to ask your reason here if we can. Okay, appointments, we have none.
John, is the light on your microphone on? I'm not getting that.
Apparently not.
There you go.
Okay.
I apologize to those people at home, and if you're looking at this recording later, I hope you can read my lips, but, okay, reports. We have a report from the Selectmen. Maureen, you were on vacation, do you have anything?
No, and most of the groups did meet Council of Aging and Community Reservation. I don't know if you have anything you wanted to mention? No? Okay.
Open space meeting, is this Thursday?
This meeting's on the seventeenth, yep, and Conservation Commission also met. So I don't, I didn't get any email from anybody. Whoa, it's just loud.
No one approved. Francine?
Yes, I want to report on an exhibit that will be on display at Hampshire Regional High School the week of January twenty-eighth. It's called Hidden in Plain Sight. It's an interactive exhibit for parents to kind of walk them through how they might locate and identify in their child's bedroom where they might have drug or alcohol paraphernalia. This is an adult-only exhibit. It's by appointment only. I will send this information to Robert so that parents will know how to schedule an appointment. It will be the week of the twenty-seventh, or the twenty-eighth of January, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, from eight in the morning to eight at night, and Thursday and Friday of that week, the thirtieth and thirty-first, just during school hours. And I will send this information to Robert for the town newsletter so that you have the contact information whereby you could make an appointment to attend. Sounds pretty interesting, but it is open only to adults. All right. Thank you. And the other, the other meeting I attended was last evening, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We're still reviewing the original master plan and working to coming towards consensus on what the next steps might be and how we might gather additional information before we present it to the Select Board and then ultimately the town. The next scheduled meeting, and they're open to the public, will be next Monday, January twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything?
Planning Board met last Wednesday. There was two preliminary subdivision plans that came before us. They're preliminary at this point. Both of them are below the inclusionary zoning limit of ten for affordable housing. One of them, I think, might be eight and one might be nine. They're actually adjacent to each other, but they're on two different, they're two different owners. What else? The Planning Board voted to recommend, we'll see it a little bit later on, is a warrant article for the acceptance of Quigley Road above Crook Ridge. So that's all I have.
Yeah, no, it was an interesting meeting. Those developments are going to be, like you said, seventeen new homes possibly. Finance.
That's Matt.
Pardon? Oh, I was gonna say finance, nothing coming from the Finance Committee, so I have nothing else on that. New business, review of articles and signing of special town meeting warrant for February fifth, twenty nineteen.
Excuse me, can I just ask a question? Does our town administrator have a report? No.
Only a couple items, since it seems like we just met again.
I missed that entirely, thank you.
You know, it seems like the, that's okay, you can forget about me. But actually, I'd be welcome at one of these meetings.
I forget my microphone, then I forget the town administrator. That's not a good start.
But two things, seems like I get asked every week, no, we have not heard anything further on the Glendale Road grant this week, and then the other piece, I'll just remind you all that other than next Tuesday night's meeting, I will be out of the office all week.
Okay. And can I just ask you as a follow-up, Ed? We talked about posting documents for Select Board meetings on the town website so that people could be looking at the same information as we're discussing it. How far, is that a possibility yet?
I'm gonna have to do some further training, but actually, I think it's something we can actually use our new document scanning resource for that will work out very well.
And they'll be on mytown.gov, right?
They will be somewhere on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else I missed? Okay. Review of articles and signing of special town meeting warrant February fifth, twenty nineteen. Okay, there are a large number of articles, twenty-seven to be sure. Do we want to go through every single one and read it through? And do we have to do that, Ed? Are you aware of us having to read them all, or Mr. Moderator, is there?
Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. I believe it's an excellent idea to read them. People get an opportunity to think about them, they're asking more sound questions or not asking questions because they may know the answer, so it, it does help to have a more efficient, it's laborious, but we only do it a couple of times a year, so I would recommend it.
Okay, fair point.
And it's an opportunity for each, for anybody perhaps, depending how you handle it, ask questions, could be a typo, could be a misunderstanding, we've had that before, so it helps.
Good. While you're up there, could you remind everybody when the town moderator's meeting is for the articles?
Don't you want to ask me to read the articles? I'm like, he's not, is he?
Not that cruel.
Town moderator, special town meeting information session on January thirty-one, Thursday, in this room at seven o'clock. The moderator will read all the articles. There will be questions and what cannot be answered will be carried to the Select Board or town administrator for tweaking or not tweaking of the motions. Because essentially, what you vote on tonight is the warrant.
Right.
And any, any legal tweaking by copayment and page would be to the motions. Okay, we're good.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna start reading these, and I'm gonna ask you all to share in the reading, if you don't mind. Jim, do you want to start with the?
Sure.
Article one?
Okay, it's titled, "Local Option Adult Use Marijuana Excise Tax," to see if the town will vote to accept General Law sixty-four N three, to allow a three percent local tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town of Southampton or take any action related thereto.
So anybody see any issues, grammar, spelling, anything here or have any questions?
Just a quick one. Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street, this is for Ed. Does it need to be MGL or GL suffices?
GL was what KP came back with, so.
Now, Jim, would you mind reading the two and three since they're all related and they're on the planning, you're on the Planning Board?
Sure. Article two. Amend general town bylaws limiting, limitation on the number of adult-use marijuana retail establishments. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Southampton general bylaws to create a new article, looks like, what was that, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine, yeah.
Thirty-nine, bunch of X's, one and an X.
It would get added to the end of our existing bylaws.
Okay. Marijuana Section One, limitation on adult-use marijuana retail establishments, which would provide as follows. Section one, the number of adult-use marijuana retailer establishments as defined in General Law ninety-four G, section one, permitted to be located within the town of Southampton shall not exceed twenty percent of the number of licenses issued within the town for the retail sale of alcohol beverages, not to be drunk on premises where sold under Chapter one thirty-eight of General Laws. For the purpose of determining this number, any fraction, there should be rounded up to the next highest whole number where sold under Chapter one thirty-eight of General Laws. For the purpose of determining this number, any fraction shall be rounded up to the next whole number or take any action thereto.
And just one note on that, is KP has noted that while this, the general bylaws refers to twenty percent, the zoning bylaw actually refers to fifty percent, so might have to take a look at, Planning Board might have to take a look at that.
Now, at the fifty percent level, if I remember correctly, that just still limits it to two in town, correct?
Correct. The Planning Board did vote on two, fifty.
Fifty percent.
Which would allow up to two, because I think we have three retailers of alcohol at this point, and being rounded up, it would bring it to two.
So should this be fifty also?
That should be fifty, correct.
Should be fifty.
Okay. I can make that change tonight before it's signed.
Does anybody else see anything else with Article two?
Does somebody have a spare copy of that? I didn't want to hear.
And there's a couple more here, if anybody else would like some.
So we're on page three, if you're getting it now. Article three. You guys ready? Yep. Amen general town bylaws, the prohibition on public consumption of marijuana or, all right, you can say that word, John.
Tetrahydrocannabinol.
It's tetrahydrocannabinol.
Okay, thank you.
The nurse.
That's what she said.
What's the abbreviation for that?
THC.
THC, okay, that's a.
That's what I know it by.
Okay.
To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Southampton general bylaws to create a new article, thirty-nine, marijuana section two, prohibition on public consumption of marijuana, THC, which would provide as follows, marijuana section two, no person shall inhale, ingest, or otherwise use, consume marijuana or THC as defined in General Law ninety-four C, section one as amended, well, in or upon any public place, including but not limited to any public or private street to which the public has a right to access, sidewalks, public way, footway, passageway, stairs, bridge, parks, playgrounds, beach, recreation area, boat landing, public building, schoolhouse, school grounds, cemetery, parking lot, and any area owned by or under the control of the town, or in any, upon, or in or upon any bus or other passenger conveyance operated by a common carrier, or in any place which members of the public have access as invitees or licensees. In or upon any other place accessible to the public, whoever is found in violation of this bylaw shall be, or shall, when requested by an official authorized to enforce this bylaw, state their true name and address to such official. This bylaw may be enforced by any police officer of the town through any lawful means in law or in equity, including but not limited to the enforcement by criminal indictment to General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one, or by noncriminal disposition pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty D, twenty-one D. The fine of the violation of this bylaw shall be three hundred dollars for each offense. Any penalty imposed under this bylaw shall be in addition to any civil penalty imposed under General Law ninety-four C, Section thirty-two L. This bylaw may be enforced through any lawful means in law or quiddity, including but not limited to enforcement by criminal indictment or complaint pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one, or by noncriminal, noncriminal disposition pursuant to Chapter, General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D, or any police officer. The fine for violating this bylaw shall be three hundred dollars for each offense. Any penalty imposed under this bylaw shall be additional to any civil penalty imposed under General Law, Chapter ninety-four, Section thirty-two L. This bylaw shall not alter or affect the jurisdiction of the Board of Health under the provisions of General Law, Chapter one one one, Section thirty-one, or any other applicable law, including but not limited to the regulation of combustion and inhalation of tobacco and nontobacco products in workplaces and public spaces in the town or take any action relative thereto.
Any questions on Article three? Yes, sir.
Hi, John. Director to Jim, Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. I understand what I've read, I understand what I've heard. I'm going to be asked before the meeting, at the information center during the meeting, restaurant parking lot. It's a parking lot, is that a public space? And I'm picking restaurant parking lot out of the air. Thank you.
I can't answer that.
I understand, I'm good.
We may want to get legal opinion on that prior to.
Okay, that's a good idea, but somebody could jump on somebody's lawn and they're out of the road, they're out of the street, and it's not a public place?
Yeah, yeah. This bylaw was drafted by the Piney Valley Planning and adapted to Southampton, so our first call might be to them.
A cookie cutter bylaw of a few little twinges.
Yeah.
Beach or something that doesn't change the law, just names of another place.
Right. And I just want to reiterate, now that we're pretty much wrapping up the marijuana section of this.
Pun intended.
Yeah. The, without a bylaw, then there are no laws for this, then we go to, back to the Massachusetts laws. So if we don't pass a bylaw, then there can be fifty shops or a hundred shops, there could be, you know, I mean, it's open season. It's whatever would be authorized by the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission. This bylaw tightens it up and gives the town some control, but we have limits on what we can do and what we can't do. So like that twenty percent, we cannot go below twenty percent, but he says you got to be somewhere there above, that's why we went to fifty, which would allow two, but, so yeah, a few things we might have to tweak and get some answers prior to the meeting.
I made a note of that.
And the motion can be more fluid as long as it's in the four corners of the article. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Stay close to the podium.
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting.
You want to take the next three or so? Francine?
Okay. Part two, town roads. Article four, street acceptance, to see if the town will vote to accept Quigley Road as a public way as shown on a plan entitled Quigley Road, prepared for the Southampton Planning Board and recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, Plan Book two-three-seven, pages, page twenty-nine, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and/or easements in Quigley Road for all for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Southampton, and any drainage, utility, access, and/or other easements related thereto, all as shown on the plan, or take any other action related thereto.
So Ed, a question, or maybe Jim, for you on the Planning Board. Acquired by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain, the fee to and easements, that doesn't mean that we have to purchase anything on Quigley Road, it's just the easements attached to it, like electrical and all that, is that it?
Right. You get the base road, which includes a sidewalk, and the utilities, there's drainage easements, which in this case are going to be maintained by the Homeowners Association, but for some reason that is not done, it gives the town the right to go on and make sure the drainages are working properly, or if we have to clean them or whatever, if they're not maintaining them. Gives the town the authority to do that.
It just doesn't commit us to any cost upfront for this, that's just down the road in case we need to go in.
Yep, that's what I believe.
So the plowing then would be by the town?
Correct. Once the town, if the town accepts this road, it will be a, it will be a public road at that point.
Maintained by the town.
I'm sorry, Randall Kemp has already approved this, as I understand, correct, Jim?
No, he has not.
No, he has not.
So we have to get his.
He was asked several times to go, and I guess for some reason he was unable to make it, and the Planning Board moved it forward at the last meeting. And the other thing is, the town has a right to vote it down or vote, you know, if they want it a public way, that's great, if they don't, that's great, but if they don't, then the plowing would revert to the Homeowners Association, and the maintenance of it would. But if the town accepts it, then the town is responsible at that point, and then the homeowners are only responsible for the stormwater management, the detention basins and the catch basins and things.
So Ed, do we know why Randall has not accepted it? Because I wouldn't want to go forward with it if Randall's not comfortable.
Uh, Randall wasn't quite, quite sure if, and some of the other conditions, if all the drainage was done right and whatever, so he was gonna go out and take a, a look at it and see, he wasn't even sure if the sidewalks had been put in at this point in time, so he's gonna go out and take a look at it and see if everything has been done that is in our rules and regulations.
And he'll get back to you? Yeah. Did you want?
I just wanted to ask, does the Planning Board make a site visit when there's a request like this?
Yeah, the, I was not present, I was out of town at the time, but the Planning Board made a site visit, and during their visit, there was a few things missing that they addressed right away, so it was to their satisfaction. But they usually, we usually rely on Randall to go up there and take a final look at it, because it's gonna be his road to maintain, so.
Okay, so we're gonna hear back from him before town meeting.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, Francine?
Okay, part three, zoning bylaws, Article five, amend zoning bylaw slash adult-use marijuana establishments, to see if the town will vote to amend the Southampton zoning bylaw by one, amending section five, table one, using regulations, wholesale, transportation, and industrial uses, to add the new adult-use marijuana establishment uses as set forth in attachment A heretofore. And two, deleting the current section eighteen, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, and replacing it with this new section eighteen, adult-use marijuana establishments as set forth in attachment A heretofore, or take any action related thereto.
Questions on Article five?
Okay, we're not reading attachment A?
Uh, we're not reading attachment A, it's eight pages long, if somebody would like to see, see the attachments, I'm.
Yes.
And that's available.
Share my copies.
I know it's available in Town Clerk's Office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's, the Planning Board held a public hearing and it was advertised.
And we'll be putting it on the website, too.
Okay, attachments A and B, okay.
Okay.
All right, Article six, amend zoning bylaw slash medical marijuana zoning bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the Southampton zoning bylaw by one, amending section five, table one, use regulations, retail and service uses to add, in quotes, off-site medical marijuana dispensary, otherwise known as OMMD, and registered marijuana dispensary, RMD, as set forth in attachment B heretofore. And two, add a new section nineteen, registered marijuana dispensary, RMD, and off-site medical marijuana dispensary as set forth in attachment B heretofore, or take any action related thereto.
Okay, questions on Article six? Yes, sir.
Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. I want to address the attachments. I feel you may not be wanting to read those at the town meeting.
Uh, do you have a?
As long as the attachments are there in sufficient quantity for everyone.
They will, number one, they'll be actually posted with the warrant, and number two, yes, oh.
But at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, gotta make sure there's like two-hundred-and-fifty of them or so, so.
All right.
If you want to go ahead, go ahead.
Part four, financial items, Article seven, unpaid bills, to see if the town will vote to transfer one thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents to the prior year's year bills account for unpaid bills from fiscal twenty eighteen, for graphics for the police department from ProMark Graphics, a medical bill for the highway department from Holyoke Medical Center, and an ambulance billing service invoice for the fire department from coastal billing, invoices summarized below. Said some to be taken from free cash or take any action relative thereto. The police ProMark, the bill from ProMark Graphics in the amount of four hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, the highway department from Holyoke Medical Center for eighty dollars, and the fire department coastal billing for seven hundred eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Okay.
I have a question. Go ahead.
Uh, as, Robert Floyd, as an aside, historically, we had one of these unpaid bills, not the same vendor, it went on well over twenty minutes with no repetition, so it was a big surprise, almost forced us into a second night. So any article can really take up much more time than the meat of, of the warrant of the article.
Okay, I'll.
I have a question.
Sure.
On this one, why are we taking the money from free cash as opposed to operating stabilization?
Well, I believe because it's last fiscal year. Ed, is that accurate?
It could have come from either, actually, but free cash seemed to be the cleaner way to do it.
Even though it's a prior fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a preference that gets taken?
It just seems like this one and another one, Article eleven, they have to do with unanticipated operating expenses, and so to me, it seems actually cleaner to just assign it where it seems like it belongs as opposed to a general category of free cash.
Ed, if it comes from free cash, isn't it still gonna be assigned to the appropriate account as?
Yes.
For tracking?
Yeah, and basically, the, the operational stabilization account has been funded through free cash.
Oh, I know, I can see that, I'm just, just wondering. I also work for Valley Health Systems, so I probably won't be able to approve that, right?
Uh, Valley Health Systems is under Holyoke Medical Center?
Uh, Holyoke Medical Center is under our Valley Health Systems.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, we have the balances in each one of those stabilization funds, do we, there's no one here to speak to what is currently there.
If my memory is correct, I believe after, if everything was approved in here, there's still gonna be somewhere around three, a little over three hundred thousand dollar in the operational stabilization account.
Any other questions on Article seven? Okay, and we'll go on to Article eight. Transfer from free cash to the capital stabilization fund, see if the town will vote to transfer or appropriate a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents to the capital stabilization fund, said some to be taken from free cash or take any other action thereto. This is part of our normal transfer, Ed?
Yes, this is part of the formula to transfer free cash percentages into capital stabilization, operating stabilization, and OPUB, ALPEB.
ALPEB, yeah. Do you remember what the percentages were? Does anybody?
I know what adds up.
Somebody understands that while back we voted to have that every year?
They're not equal, the three of them add up to seventy-five.
Thirty, thirty-five, and whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
But it was voted, we do this every year with free cash so that we can increase our three funds here. three funds here. Okay. So, I'm gonna go on to Article nine. Transfer of free cash to the OPEB fund to see if the town will vote to transfer or appropriate thirty thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents to the other post-employment benefits OPEB account, said some to be taken from free cash or take any action relative thereto. Again, similar to Article nine. Any questions? Article ten, transfer of free, well, this is worded right. So, transfer of free cash, we could take the word from out of there. Well, actually, if you go back to Article eight, nine and ten, one says transfer from, the other says transfer of. So, why don't we put all transfer from? So, they're all consistent. Does that work? Okay. Number ten, transfer from free cash to the operating stabilization fund to see if the town will vote to transfer or appropriate ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety cents to the operating stabilization fund, said some to be taken from free cash or take any other action relative thereto. Questions? Article eleven, additional funding for town hall building expenses to see if the town will vote to appropriate eight thousand dollars to the town hall building expense account for unexpected expenses relative to the repair of the HVAC system and plumbing in the town hall, said some to be taken from free cash or take any other action relative thereto. Questions on that one? Okay. Article twelve, funding for principal assessor certification stipend to see if the town will vote to transfer one thousand dollars from assessor admin assistant wage account to the certification stipend account to fund the town approved stipend for attaining assessor certification or take any other action relative thereto. Questions? Okay, Article thirteen, there's gonna be a change here. Funding for police department server replacement. It says to see if the town will vote to transfer twelve thousand eight hundred dollars from the police communication wages account to the police department, police equipment maintenance expense account to replace the seven-year-old police, seven-year-old police server and backup or take any other action relative thereto. We want to change the twelve thousand eight hundred dollars to fourteen thousand two hundred and eight dollars and forty-one cents. Matt Rowland just came down and told me that the Capitol Committee voted on that unanimously to approve the new amount.
Fourteen two oh eight?
Forty-one, yeah.
Forty-one, got it.
And I will tell you that the difference would be, there was three steps to this and Ian fell into this about three days into his new interim position. And he'd taken the middle stance, which sort of would've replaced the server and the backup to the server, but did not update the antivirus. So, this last step at fourteen thousand two hundred and eight dollars and forty-one cents would also update their antivirus on the server.
Sound right, chief? Okay, good.
Oh, jeez. I'm sorry.
Just wanted to make sure you told the right story, yeah.
Close enough?
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, Article fourteen, funding for police chief vacation payout to see if the town will vote to transfer four thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents from the police education incentive account to the police chief salary account to pay out the vacation time for the retired police chief or take any other action relative thereto. And that's just doing a normal process of paying out earned vacation. Any questions on that? Article fifteen, additional funding for PEG access to see if the town will vote to appropriate thirty-four thousand dollars to public access television account, said some to be appropriated from revenues received from charter spectrum from the town's contract with them or take any other action relative thereto. Questions?
Yeah, just what we've all been waiting for. We get the same issues.
No, actually, what we had done is, in previous fiscal years, we had used a process that funded the ECAT payments from receipts, receipts from charter reserve for appropriation. But DOR kind of Department of Revenue changed their standards in the last year and had come out with an opinion that you could only appropriate funds that you already had in hand. So, while we would get through about the first half of the year and be able to pay the first and second payments, when the third and fourth came in, first of all, we had to get the check from charter and then if we had a town meeting or a special town meeting come up with that, appropriate it. So, starting in fiscal year nineteen, we had changed it to an actual appropriation matched by revenues from charter. However, when we did the original budget for fiscal year nineteen, we had only funded half the year. And there's no net, no net impact to the taxpayers or the budget because not only does the appropriation go up by thirty-four thousand dollars, we also add thirty-four thousand dollars to our revenue estimate from charter.
So, this is our regular payment?
This would, yes, balance that, our regular payment for a year.
Okay. Article sixteen, transfer for Sharps program to see if the town will vote to transfer nineteen hundred dollars from Hampshire Council of Government's expense account and one thousand dollars from the annual audit expense account to the Board of Health Sharps program expense account to fund the program through the end of the fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto. Any comment on that?
Can you tell me is, was that not budgeted tightly or is this increased use or what?
Increased use. The original amount for the year was funded at three thousand dollars. Roughly halfway through the year, they have used all but four hundred dollars of that. So, it's been a very successful program.
Article seventeen, transfer for treasurer software support to see if the town will vote to transfer five hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Hampshire Council of Government's expense account, from Hampshire Council of Government's expense, wait a minute, from the Hampshire.
Yeah, that's double.
This is double, huh?
Yeah.
So, take out the second from Hampshire Council of Government's expense account.
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's my.
Pardon?
That's my fault.
No problem. To see if the town will vote to transfer five hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Hampshire Council of Government's expense account to the treasurer software support expense account or take any other action relative thereto. Article eighteen, transfer for Pioneer Valley Planning to see if the town will vote to transfer fourteen dollars and seventy-one cents from Hampshire Council of Government's expense account to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission expense account or take any other action relative thereto. No questions? Okay. Article nineteen, funding for extended illness account COA van driver to see if the town will vote to appropriate twenty-five hundred dollars from free cash to an extended illness account per PQB policies to fund the leave for the COA van driver for up to twelve weeks or take any other action relative thereto. Is that due to the new law that went into effect for time off?
No. This is due to our own short-term disability policy. The, be careful how I do this because of HIPAA. The COA van driver is going to be out of work for approximately twelve weeks due to an operation and because he is eligible for the short-term disability policy to actually have a temporary fill-in.
Okay.
We need, we needed additional funding.
Okay, that's fine. So, this is funding.
So, the temporary person replacing him while he's on leave will be paid from the grant.
Right.
And the seventy-five percent of the person's salary on short-term disability will come from the town.
Will come from this account, correct.
So, this isn't budgeted other than free cash?
No.
It's unexpected.
It's unexpected because the person's still, if you didn't fill the position, we'd be fine. But in this case, where you have to fill the position if you want the van to still run, funding is short because you're still paying the person seventy-five percent while they're out.
That's where there's a big liability exposure to the town because all the town employees that have that benefit could be out substantial amount of time and we still have to hire somebody to take their place. That's why years ago, we were really looking at doing a short-term disability for them, which I think we should look at again at some point. I think it was around ten to twelve thousand dollars and that would be a fixed budget item that would cover us for all that exposure.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
John? While we're still on this, I'd like to go back and Maureen had asked a question about one difference between funding directly from free cash and funding from operational stabilization or capital stabilization. We'll just say operational stabilization is, funding directly from free cash is a majority vote. If you fund from any of the stabilization accounts, it's a two-thirds required vote. So, there's a little bit of semantics in that difference.
Okay, thanks. Article twenty, transfer ambulance receipts to the ambulance operating accounts to see if the town will vote to transfer appropriate two thousand dollars from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to the ambulance maintenance account to cover repairs to the ambulances or take any other action relative thereto. Article twenty-one, funding for the fire truck maintenance to see if the town will vote to transfer two thousand dollars from fire department expenses to the fire department fire truck maintenance account to cover repairs to the fire trucks or take any other action relative thereto.
Questions?
Article twenty-two, funding for the highway department for required MS4 required work to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty-seven thousand dollars from operating stabilization to the highway department MS4 stormwater management expense account to cover the cost of required work to meet the town's MS4 stormwater permit or to take other action relative thereto.
Questions?
I have a question on that one. So, we had Randall come in and talk about, this is a state requirement, but twenty-seven thousand dollars is not covering all of it. So, is this like a part one or?
Actually, the first part, if you remember, when we actually had to perform the application and a little work, and my memory is, was I think somewhere around eighty-five hundred dollars. We actually voted to do that and to allow Randall to use, I think it was his general fund maintenance account to do that. That at least got us through the time, the short time to actually file the application to get it approved. In addition to that, before June thirtieth, there was another twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of work that needed to be done to actually keep us in compliance. This additional twenty-seven thousand dollars would allow us to stay in compliance and get this done before the end of the year. Now, however, for fiscal year twenty, there's gonna be another, somewhere between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of required work to stay in compliance in this that we're gonna have to look to fund somehow. So, whether you said it was, could look at his phase two of, you know, three, but there'll be a follow-up phase next year, too, and probably into the future.
Do you think this is a reoccurring cost?
I think it's gonna be reoccurring. I don't know if it's going to be reoccurring, shall we say, at this same level, will diminish a little bit, or if anything will come up in the future that might increase it. It is actually one of the reasons that some other communities, and I will say mostly larger, have actually looked at implementing a stormwater fee to their residents to actually fund this, excuse the expression, unfunded mandate.
It's caused a lot of controversy, too.
Yes, I know it has.
Article twenty-three, funding for health director to see if the town will vote to transfer five thousand dollars from unemployment expense account to the health director wage account to fund the position for the remainder of the year or take any other action relative thereto.
Now, is this just to fund the position or does this have to do with the equity adjustment?
Article twenty-three and Article twenty-four actually are tied to the pay equity question that I was asked to look into and, shall we say, discern and, which was, are the health director and the building commissioner positions under Massachusetts New Pay Equity Act similar, not similar, what have you? I worked with town council to go through that. While I didn't find them, shall we say, totally one hundred percent equal, I found that the two positions were probably, I'll say, much closer in comparison duties and requirements than the difference in what the hourly pays would be between the two positions. So, this would actually bring the health director's position in line with what I had recommended through my analysis for fiscal year nineteen.
So, there's no other line items in the health department that they can fund this through? They have to go through the operating stabilization?
Yeah, other than, shall we say, the health director position or the health agent position, there is very little funding within the health department to go from. But, you know, we took, we took a look at it. There was not anything within the health department we could transfer to. We recognized the importance of staying as much as possible within our fiscal year nineteen budget line items and total budget. So, Vicki took a look at any areas first that we might be able to transfer, even if it was outside the department. That's where we came up with the five thousand dollars from the unemployment expense account.
So, two things. One is, we were encouraged by the Department of Revenue not to change salaries mid-year. So, is this something that has to happen before the end of the fiscal year?
I would say in this particular case, since Massachusetts Pay Equity Act actually took effect back on July first, twenty eighteen, that yes, it should be enacted as soon as possible or addressed as soon as possible.
And I'll just second what John just asked. There's no, I mean, I think it's debatable whether or not we need a health agent and health director for the town of six thousand people. So, there's no money in the budget for the health department to cover this expense.
Correct.
We're gonna have to address this in fiscal twenty budget.
Yep, yeah. So, will the Board of Health?
Right.
So, Article twenty-four, we didn't really read through then?
Yeah, why don't you go through that?
All right. Funding for the health director to see if the town will vote to transfer ten thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and one cent from the operating stabilization account to the health director wage account to fund the position through the remainder of the fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto. And I believe Article twenty-five is the request to pass over. Is that right?
Yes, there'll be no action taken.
No action taken.
At town meeting, however, what we found out, actually just today, that it is something that the town could do. However, to do it, we have to, there's some additional steps and we have to amend our existing revolving fund chart. So, we're gonna look to address this at the annual town meeting in May.
Okay. A question, this, Matt Rowland gave me this information before the meeting and since he's upstairs, I wanna bring it up. Wondering why this article's here at all. And he received an email.
John, do you mind if I just, or you read the article itself?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Conservation Commission Forest Management of Town Conservation Areas to see if the town will vote to allow proceeds using revolving fund obtained by Forest Management of the town's conservation areas using best practice management practices, best management practices to be used in conservation-related expenses for the town's conservation areas or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. So, the question is, and boy, I'm not gonna read the whole thing because it just goes to a lot of areas, but basically, why are we letting the Conservation Commission have control of that fund versus the money's going into the, a central general fund? My understanding is we have to assign the responsibilities to a particular committee, I'm at a particular committee, and that's why we're giving it to ConCom because they're responsible for that. Is that accurate or is there more to that?
I think that's, I think that's accurate and there's two sides to, there's two sides to this equation. One is, and as you know, through the past year, we're looking at acquiring more open space and assigning it to the Conservation Commission. space and assigning it to the Conservation Commission. So number one, we either have to take a look at actually appropriating funds from the general fund to the Conservation Commission so they can maintain the current lands, trails, what have you. Or if we did not want to appropriate funds to do that, you could do this and set it up as a revolving fund, so anything that they, excuse me, received in from Forest Management trimming trees or cutting, thinning out the forest would be eligible for them to use in the revolving fund. I mean, if we thought that there was an awful lot of forest out there that was going to bring in a ton of money, I might be more hesitant about using a revolving fund to, for the utilization, for having ConCom to have a means of maintaining existing trails and properties. If we took a look at what we have for existing conservation lands and determined that really there's not much that really can be forested or the trees that are in those forests, forests are preliminary, maybe softwood or what have you, if not a high deman tree, and we're not going to, shall we say, generate a lot of income, then I would probably have much less fears of doing it through a revolving fund.
But I guess the question will be, if it's not now, in the 2020 budget, will there be funds available to the Conservation Commission, either through a revolving fund or through, or through the general fund, to maintain the trails?
Well, I think that's up to two different steps. One is, what or, one or through both, one or both methods is the Board of Selectmen willing to put that on an annual town meeting warrant? And the second part of that is obviously a town meeting vote either way to approve those funds, either a revolving fund or an appropriation of funds to do it. Personally, at this point in time, I think it's, from what I have seen in my short time here of what the town seems to look at the value of having open space, I think it's an important thing to look at one way or the other.
I just want to mention that the Conservation Commission did have a budget and it was slashed to zero. And then there was a grant for a conservation agent shared with East Hampton, and when we were painstakingly going through the override or non-override budget, it was not put into either one of the columns. So they have been operating basically with no budget whatsoever. And they are a very, very hardworking committee that meets every two weeks. They had a forester on the committee, among other very qualified people, and it's in the best interest of the land for it to be forested for the sake of a property. And it usually takes several years before there's any generating of any money from any land that's forested. So I think one way or another, we need to support this particular committee because there's a huge interest right now in open space. And I think if we're going to have open space, we have to have some way to actually maintain it. There was another question that came up with Matt's question to you, John, about this particular committee, and the question was, should any committee have that much say over, you know, the funds like that? I just want to remind everybody that I sat in a community preservation committee meeting when the community preservation department committee was voting whether or not to bring to the voters the Glendale Road purchase. And that was one committee that had the ability to shoot it down, and when it went to the town, it was overwhelmingly passed. So I think that we have committees that have a tremendous amount of authority, and I think that's, we elect these people or we appoint these people to do a job, and I think we should support them.
Just out of curiosity, what's the acreage that they're, you know, in charge of managing? Do you have any estimate?
I think it's 700 or something. I think, yeah, 600 and something acres. And each land, I think there's about four of them, and each one would cost about $3,000 to $4,000 each to maintain. One of the nicest trails is the Heather Young Trail there, and this, you know, there's bridges that have moss on them that are not safe. There's, you know, so I think it does take a fair amount of work, and right now, there's a lot of interest in supporting the open space and the maintenance of the land. So I think the voters should get a chance to chime in on it.
It's a lot of land.
But it is being, there's not going to be any action taken. They're requesting it because they want to do more research on the revolving fund, and they're communicating with people statewide to see, they want to, they want to gather more information, so we may see it again for the regular town meeting.
Do you want to say anything else?
No, I mean, I kind of started halfway through. I mean, I, I hope it was presented in a way that a concerned citizen reached out and passed that comment, and I think it was worth discussing. It sounds like you.
I didn't read the whole email. I just brought up those two points.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, not, not independent thoughts of mine, but certainly brought to my attention. And I think that it's, I mean, look, I think any discussion about these things is important so that way we're not, we're accounting for all of the opinions that are out there and trying to make the best decision.
Yep.
So we all okay with leaving it on and just passing it over at town meeting?
Sure.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Because we can't act on it, right? It's not.
It's not done properly, so.
Okay. There's a, a number of other steps that would have to be followed.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. I'll finish up the last two, Part Five, Community Preservation Funding. Article 26, Transfer CPC Funds for Library Historical Records Online Access. To see if the town will vote to transfer $6,000 from community preservation funds to the Edward Library to continue and expand online access of Southampton's historical materials available online to the public. Said some to be transferred from community preservation surcharges, historical preservation account, or take any other action relative thereto. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. And last one, Part Six, Bonded Debt. Article 27, Replacement of East Street Bridge. To see if the town will vote to borrow of sum of money of $1,600,000 to replace the East Street Bridge in the town of Southampton. Said funds to be used for construction fees and permits, engineering, temporary easements, or any other eligible costs associated with the construction of the new bridge and the demolition of the existing bridge and to meet this appropriation authorized to treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow pursuant to the General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore, provided however, that the appropriation authorized hereon there shall be contingent on the approval by the voters of the town of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), and authorize the treasurer with the approval, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 30, sorry, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 9, or any other general law or special law, or to take any other action relative thereto. Is that, Ed, on the last line, there's a comma, semicolon, is that semicolon necessary?
Actually, probably the comma isn't necessary.
One of those out. Okay, this is the additional money we need. Hopefully, we're getting a million dollars for the grant, and this 1.6 million will bring it up to the 2.6 million costs that we now know it's going to be for the bridge. Is that correct, Ed?
Correct.
Okay. Any?
The estimate is 2.6 million in total, and we have the million-dollar Mass Horse Grant, so this 1.6 would be the difference.
Right.
Can I ask you a question? Does this cover for all the expenses that'll go along with that? Like, obviously, this is going to have to be a study that looks at the safety and emergency vehicles and changing the routes and the closure of the bridge and all of that?
It should.
It's included?
Any borrowing would be a two-thirds vote, correct? Even a lease is considered a borrowing and would require a two-thirds vote.
You know, and Tammy brings up a point. Normally on these articles, we have somewhere down listed if it takes, you know, a majority or two-thirds, just so people know. Can we do that on the final versions?
No, I thought that was done with the motions and summaries.
Yeah, wherever it shows up, yeah.
Yeah, it will be there.
Just helpful, okay.
Yeah.
And there will be someone to explain any implications financially to the people in the audience? Okay. Because I'm sure that'll raise some questions.
So in general, any other questions on the articles? Just a reminder, town moderator on January 31st, 7 o'clock in this room, will have a meeting, so if you have any questions, feel free to bring them. It's always an exciting time.
The buses are parked out front, so they can take everybody home.
Okay. Next item, new business, letter of resignation, Jonathan Hardy McCalliff from the Conservation Commission? Is that by chance the forester you were talking?
Yeah, unfortunately, it is the forester, and he's moving to the Pacific Northwest.
Oh, wow.
Pacific?
That's a long commute.
Where there are a lot of trees.
So we have a opening on the Conservation Commission?
And he was representative on the master plan as well.
He is?
Yeah. So Conservation will have to.
So they're going to have to assign somebody else. You're on the ConCom?
I'm the liaison to the ConCom.
So can you bring that up in case they don't have it?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Jonathan Hardy McCalliff.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other necessary business that cannot await the January 22nd regular select board meeting? Matt, would you mind giving us an update on the capital committee?
Yeah, so we just met, which is why I was half in this meeting and half not. We discussed the police server article, and that was approved, you know, you discussed that in my absence, and that was approved unanimously by our board. We also discussed the debt exclusion for East Street Bridge, and VHB was present as well, so we went through that in a good amount of detail, and we approved that unanimously as well, and hope the townspeople will too.
Were any other items discussed at the?
Just, just those two, and that, you know, Ed, we spoke about this too, that, you know, the, the capital process, that we get good information soon to begin, you know, the, you know, five to 10-year capital improvement plan for each department and to get that in advance of, you know, the, the spring, the spring meeting so that we can have, make some decisions and start getting on some of those things that need to be taken care of.
Yeah, I just didn't want to send the other information and have it get mixed up with this, so I wanted to kind of keep it.
Yep.
Separate, so they will be getting that, and they can start their meetings for fiscal year 20.
Great.
Any other business that can't await the next meeting? Okay. No personal change forms, no licenses, permits. Francine, you've signed these warrants?
Yes, I did. It's warrant P19-28 for $264,218.20, and warrant PD19-28 for $41,736.49.
Okay, no, no motions required on that. Other documents requiring signatures, we have a discharge of lien on real estate from the Southampton Community Assistance Housing Rehabilitation Program from fiscal year 2010. You want to speak to that, Ed?
Sure. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has reached out to us, and it took a little bit of research since neither the Collector Treasurer or I was around in 2010, but it appears that there was a joint, shall we say, housing rehabilitation project done between the town of Southampton and the town of Blandford. That's why the property that they're asking for the discharge of lien in is in Blandford, not Southampton. But these are basically 15-year programs, and if someone has awarded the money and improves their house, if they live in it and keep it for 15 years, it's basically an interest-free grant which they have received and don't have to pay anything back on. But if for any reason within that 15 years, person sells the house, there's a change of ownership, person dies, what have you, it is prorated from the point of the change of ownership, and they have to pay that money back. That's the situation we are in here, and that's why Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has asked the Southampton Board of Selectmen to sign off on this discharge of lien.
So is there questions on that before we take a vote? Okay, so we need a motion to, for the discharge of lien on the real estate?
I move to. I move to discharge the lien on the real estate.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And you will have to sign this in front of a notary or town clerk, so I will actually give them to Lucy, and sometime when you are around.
Stop in.
Stop in and sign them, and we'll get them back to Pioneer Valley Planning, and they will be happy.
Okay, minutes to approve. Did everybody take a look at November 27, 2018 minutes?
Yes, yes. I'll make a motion to approve November 27, 2018 minutes.
Is there a second?
No second.
Is there any discussion?
It looks like just the typo under the hearing section. The indented paragraph residential, is it factor? F A? Let's see anything I saw.
I'm happy to paste it out.
Okay.
So with that, is that the only change?
Good job, Kathy, they were very detailed minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, it was very detailed. Good job.
So we have the motion with a slight change of, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see, selectman meetings, January 22nd. That's next week already, isn't it?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
So we should just pencil in every Tuesday, I think. It's really not that funny.
Was that, was that going to be if needed, or is that a definite?
Yeah, do we have anything important on the agenda as of now?
There's a couple of items that are on there. I mean, I don't, I can't remember anything crucial.
Well, let's take a look at it as we get closer and go from there.
Well, I would have to actually, because of the Monday holiday, I'll actually have to post this tomorrow.
Okay. So let's just keep it on? Okay.
Second, I won't be here, just to, I told you folks that before, but I'm away on a trip.
Okay.
Skype, we can Skype you.
We do that.
Or you can enjoy your vacation and let us handle it.
Not on vacation, it's work, it is work.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, next.
One thing before you get to adjournment, and I will amend it tonight so you can sign it, but if someone would make a motion in a second and then vote to actually approve the warrant and to sign it.
Okay. So, good point. So, we have a motion to approve the warrant articles as amended and have, have a sign it? Have town administrator sign it?
No, you have to sign it.
Okay, have the chair sign it?
Oh, no, all of you have to sign it, and we need at least a quorum of you. I will, I will make those changes in like five minutes, so.
Can we just rerecord this meeting and go from there?
I'll make a motion to approve the articles for the.
I'll second that.
As amended with, and we'll sign it, okay.
As amended?
Yeah, we made changes.
Right, we made changes to the dollar amount. Why need to abstain if one of the payments is to my employer?
If you have a question, I would just do it.
Okay.
That way it can't come back.
Should I abstain since I was on the.
Yeah, I was, I would say this.
You don't have to abstain.
I would, I would say that all, at this point, all Maureen would be doing would be approving it, going on the warrant. It's not like a vote to recommend that or a vote in favor of that payment.
So you feel comfortable?
Good point.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open time for the public, is there anybody out there? Is there anybody out there?
Hi, Robert Floyd, 15 E Street. Your next meeting, January 22nd, Ms. Jen Ramsey, the Executive Director of East Hampton Media, scheduled to address you.
Good point.
And, coming out of my pocket, years ago when I had a budget, Town Moderator, acquired a book, Town Meeting Time, which is on a reference at the Public Library, Edwards Public Library in town, and also a DVD, Town Meeting in You, and that's at the library. I have one that hasn't been used yet. I intend to submit it to East Hampton Media, and the Executive Director make a decision to broadcast it on our Channel 191 before the meeting on the 5th.
Good.
Great.
Does anybody have a DVD player at home?
What is that?
Why, I'm giving it up.
Tammy Walunis, 298 College Highway. I am hoping that this is okay to do. Our neighboring town, Westfield, is celebrating 350th Historical Lecture Series on Wednesdays, and tomorrow is a big one called "The Canal Greenway: From History to Modern Rail Trail." They're going to be talking about preserving the history of our canal from New Haven to Northampton, and it talks, the whole thing is about talking about history of the 16 towns. We're going to be mentioned in it. It's going to be talking about the area that we're looking at putting our Southampton Greenway. So this is tomorrow at the First Congregational Church of Westfield, which is on 18 Broad Street. The event is from 6:30 to 7:30. If anybody is interested in going, I do know there's several historical people that are from here, from our town, that are going to be going. So I thought I would let people know that.
Thanks. And just as a comment, Tammy does a good job of pushing these articles out on the Facebook page that she manages, so if nobody's, if you're not on it, you should go on there because these show up, and it's good, that's been on there for a couple of days, so thanks for doing that. Anybody else? We have no executive sessions, and the way this meeting's going, I am welcoming a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.
All right, if the five of you would just hang around, it should only take me about five minutes, so I'll make the changes to the warrant for you to sign.